Underneath.
Oh, yeah, in that right. It's it's already there.
Yeah.
Hi, Joe.
Hi, Rose. How are you? Good.
All right, I'm gonna go ahead and call the special ZBA meeting to order for July twentieth at five thirty-four. If you would all please rise and say the Pledge of Allegiance. Pledge of Allegiance.
United States of America. And to the Republic of which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
The first thing I have, I need to issue oaths for Craig, Joe, and Rose. You have all been reappointed to your seats, so congratulations. So if you three would please rise.
I, Rose Powell, I, Craig Owens, and I, Joe Jernigan, do solemnly swear or affirm that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Michigan, the City Charter and Code of Ordinances of the City of Cedar Springs, and I will faithfully discharge the duties of zoning board of appeals board member to the best of my abilities.
Me too.
I will.
Okay.
Sign on that top line. You guys, I have a second to do that. All right, so the next piece of business we have is to open the floor for nominations for the Office of Chairperson. So I'll go ahead and do that. Are there any nominations?
I nominate.
I second that nomination.
Are there any other nominations? Hearing none, Mr. Owens, will you accept the nomination?
I will.
All right, all those in favor, please say aye for Mr. Owens as chairperson.
Aye.
All those opposed? Congratulations, Mr. Owens. I will issue your oath of office.
I, Craig Owens, do solemnly swear swear or affirm that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Michigan, the City Charter and Code of Ordinances of the City of Cedar Springs, and I will faithfully discharge the duties of ZBA chairperson to the best of my abilities.
I will.
Now go ahead and turn the meeting over to you.
Reenlistment. Wouldn't that be nice? Thank you, friends. I'll do my best. All right, so we are going to open the floor for nominations for the Office of Vice Chair.
I nominate Rose Powell. Yes. I second it.
All right. And we have a nomination and support for Rose Powell. Are there any other nominations? Okay, we'll close the nominations all in favor of Rose Powell, serving as our vice chairperson. Aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? No. Motion carries. Thank you.
As long as I only have to do it once a year.
Never know.
You never know. That's a fact.
Here comes him enlisting.
I swear affirm that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Michigan and the City Charter and Code of Ordinances of the City of Cedar Springs, and I will faithfully discharge the duties of the ZBA vice chairperson to the best of my ability.
I will.
Then we'll open the floor for the nomination for the coveted Office of Secretary of the ZBA. You guys want to flip a coin for?
Joe will. I'll nominate Joe.
Yeah, I second. Excellent.
Any other nominations? All right, we'll close the nominations all in favor of Joe Jernigan for the highly sought after position of Secretary of the ZBA. Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? No. Thank you.
All right, you're welcome.
I, Joe Jernigan, do solemnly swear or affirm that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Michigan and the City Charter and Code of Ordinances of the City of Cedar Springs, and I will faithfully discharge the duties of the ZBA secretary of administration.
I do.
This always seems a little backward to me, but now we'll do the roll roll call. Mr. Owens is here. Ms. Powell?
Here.
Mr. Jernigan?
Here.
Mr. Schmitz? And we also have intendants, our city staff, our clerk and city manager. If you can remember all the way back to August of last year, we had a meeting. Oh, I'm sorry. First of all, we need to move. I need a motion to approve the agenda for this evening.
I'll make a mo- a motion to approve the agenda.
Okay.
I got that.
Anything that you see that we need to tweak on that? And all in favor of approving that motion? Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? No. Okay, thank you. All right, so back to the minutes from the August sixteenth twenty-two, twenty-twenty-two meeting. I would move that we approve that, but I would like to note that we ended that last meeting with a tabled request for eighty-one South First Street. That request has been abandoned. So if we just could note that in the approval of those minutes as well. So that's that's my motion. Is there support for that?
Support.
Anything else that anybody sees on those minutes, which I'm sure are fresh in your mind? Okay, all in favor of approving the minutes with that notation? Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? No. Motion carries. Thank you. Any conflicts of interest or ex parte communication that anybody needs to share for the items before us this evening?
Aye.
Okay, seeing none, we will move to our new business. Item A in your packet, which is page twenty-three is where you'll see the city planners report. There's some other stuff that comes a couple pages before that for display pack. So I will make the motion that we open the public hearing regarding the request from display pack at six-five-zero West Street in Cedar Springs.
Support that.
All in favor of opening that public hearing? Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? No. Okay, thank you. So the I do not see the applicant here, but you have the written statements in there, which I think are pretty clear and concise. And then we also have the city planners report. Again, I said that was on that was on page twenty-three. A note in there, you know, for any when when we're when something comes before us, we're basically giving somebody permission to do something different than what our ordinance has already say. So we want to make sure that we're not we're crossing all our Ts, dotting all our Is for a very specific request and not setting up something for a precedent down the road that then our our city manager has to deal with. Well, you let somebody else do it. So we want to be very specific on our our rulings on this. And so I we have the standards that are listed in that report. So I think that that's that makes it is very clear exactly what it is that we're talking about for that section of property. I do not see, we don't have any members of the community here to address us. Do we have anybody online that?
This time, there's nobody online.
Okay. All right. So anything that you want to add from?
Just maybe the fact that I've met several times with Mr. Blackmore. This is one piece of several things that he has going on at Display Pack. The tiller units are twelve feet tall. It's right by the White Pine Trail. I don't want to say it's a security issue, but I mean, they need to be secure. So a twelve-foot high fence just makes sense for this specific.
And can we just clarify, because Mrs. Powell pointed something out in the planners' report? It'll be the the second paragraph under background. It says the applicant is seeking to install cooling equipment. So it's already installed. So they're not seeking to install more. Okay, so that everything that's going to be installed is installed. Okay.
Yes, I did walk that today, and it does need to be twelve foot. I mean, I walked property at six-foot fence and and the chillers are twelve foot high, and it is a security, and I don't blame.
Yeah.
It absolutely is.
Yep.
So I mean, I I'm I like I said, I walked the whole thing. I do know there's a waterway ditch, which is good. I'm glad I do know that.
Right, absolutely.
And it goes, it does go into the that goes under the trail, and and it actually is the old railroad age, because when we lived, when Fike Mus and I lived on Sixteen Mile, our path was over to that corner. So I do remember it.
Ah, okay, yeah.
Is it near that cooler?
It it there's a drain on their side, so it can drain that area there and go into a drain and and get away. But there's a drain that has to be maintained. I I don't know whoever maintains the walk or the trail, but there's stuff getting in there. I don't know if there's a grate underneath it. I didn't. I didn't. I was kind of running late at time, so I didn't really get a chance to do my.
Put your waders on and get down.
I'm not beyond digging into that stuff.
Sure, absolutely.
You know what I mean?
Sure.
So but then I walked back on Display Pack side. I went down through the ditch and then went across because I wanted to see it. And and it will make it perfect, because they have six-foot-high fence out to them, to the south. And so I I do think that that's very a good idea, because next thing you know, somebody's going to be climbing.
Oh, for sure.
I wonder if if Display Pack is aware of that drainage tunnel or whatever it is.
They they must have, because there's a new drain receiver on their side, up between the chillers. So they they must be aware of that part. It's the other part that if it would start giving them problems, that's what's going to have to be attended to. It's going to get plugged there.
So.
And you said that they're already in the works to do the water main so.
Yeah.
And I seen that.
Exactly. Okay.
So I'm all game for that.
All right, so we'll go last chance for anybody that's online for that wants to make a public comment.
Nobody at this time.
Okay. All right, so then I'll make a motion that we close the public hearing.
I support.
Okay. All favor of closing the public hearing? Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? No. Okay, so now our our deliberations on that, anything, I think we kind of got it covered pretty well there. But any anything that you want to add?
I think it'll be an improvement to have that covered up to some degree. It's kind of it's.
And it looks like they're going to use kind of that netting through the well, through that part of the fence.
They're gonna have to find a different that fence, because that's that material is not.
Not permissible.
Yeah, that what what they what they submitted. So they're gonna have to come up with something else. So which then we have a suggested a motion here, which I think is is good for this. So I'll, there's no further discussion. I'll just make it this way. Motion, I would motion that we approve the variance request for Display Pack at six-fifty West Street in Cedar Springs to construct a twelve-foot fence around the cooling equipment that is installed on the east side of the building. This variance meets the standards set by chapter thirty-two dash one oh three, section B, one through six, or relief from chapter thirty-two dash five thirty-five. And the one variance provision that we need to include in there is that the fencing material has to comply with ordinance two hundred forty-two and two hundred and thirty-eight, and those materials have to be approved by our zoning administrator. That would be my motion.
I'll support that motion.
Any further discussion on that? All right, all in favor of approving that emotion? Aye.
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 Aye. All opposed? No. All right, motion carries. Thank you. All right, letter B in your packet, page thirty-seven in your online package or computer packet is where the city planners' report starts, and and there's obviously some other notations slightly above that and slightly below that. So I'll make a motion that we open the public hearing regarding it's two properties right next to each other, one ninety-one South First Street and twenty-seven East Muskegon Street in Cedar Springs. Motion to open that public hearing. Is there support for that?
Support.
All favor of opening the public hearing? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? No. Okay, our public hearing is open. Again, the applicant is not in the room. Is there the applicant online with us?
Nobody online at the current.
Okay. And you again have our city, the city planners' report in here, which again is very specific on the the requests here. Anything that we don't have any other people in the audience or in present here to? Any public comments? Iris Falcon, do you have anything that you would add to this?
Um, this one, too, I've met a couple times with the Wolf, Sue and Tim Wolf on this this issue and and others on the same property. If this is approved, they have plans to do a few other things. But I said, you know, first things first, let's start here. Just the garage needing even read the address of the southeast parcel, you know, that wants to access that garage. So.
Yep. Yes, sir.
Okay, so it it actually does twenty-seven and twenty-nine are the same. I mean, twenty-nine is the be the alley driveway that connects next to that where they want to add that garage.
Yep.
Because twenty-seven has a double carport on the on the west side.
Yes.
Correct, yes.
So twenty-nine's drive then would be nothing more than about an eight-foot. Okay, but they get in the back. There's they got lots of.
Yeah.
No, they do.
Right.
There's lots of room back there. My only question was, when I looked at that, by the way, they want to do that, you know, put that piece to it, which I understand it's only three foot. But that driveway right on the corner of that where that line would be, there's a consumer pole. Okay? That drive, and that's all right, but that drive's a little crooked. They'd almost have to take that one tree out for twenty-nine. You follow what I mean? And and make it just straighter, because what it is, you you got this. You follow what I'm saying? Or are they going to share that? You know what I'm saying? You you know, but it these are rental properties, correct? All owned by the Wolf Interact. Okay, so that was my questioning. But that's what I see, because I went and walked it. And and that was my question. Do do they take that tree out and straighten that driveway to help the next one, or are they going to kind of share that entry?
I I I don't think they're going to share it. That was not the understanding I had.
Right, well, no, but I'm just saying that they they're gonna have to make the other guy a little more room. You you follow what I'm saying?
To to enter.
Yeah.
Great.
Right.
Yeah.
Because the other ones are going to park here. I can see what they're doing. They're making two parkings there, and they got two parkings at twenty-seven. Twenty-nine has all the room in the world in the back. So that was my, that's what I think that they're trying to do, is get two vehicles, because the twenty-seven carport is is a width of a car, but it's too deep.
Oh, sure.
Yeah, because you know, you just get one car in there, right?
No, they can put in the twenty-seven, but.
Yeah, they.
Yes. They're they're just like this.
Bumper, bumper, bumper.
Bumper.
Oh, okay.
It's a deep, it's a deep carport.
Gotcha. Okay.
So then when they said that if someday they would change that, that's what they'd have to build is something.
Go back.
Because there's no other way to do anything different.
Right.
So, but I them were my only questions.
My question is, the variance that they have gone through there, right now, it's both owned by the same people. Will that variant, I mean, the the easement is what I'm talking about. Will that disappear in the future? Or I'm just thinking about people in the future.
So if this is approved tonight, the next application already on my desk is for the assessor to actually move the lot line. That's a separate approval.
To the exist, what there's what they've got flagged out, correct?
Yeah.
Which allows them to use that little garage.
Correct. Yes.
And gives them two parking spots, is what it.
Okay.
You follow what I'm saying?
Right.
And there.
It'll be, it'll be, I mean, if that is approved, it'll be forever part of
one ninety-one.
That strip will forever be part of one.
And that's a funny little shape.
Yeah.
Because I walked out on the other, you know, from the other point, and it does, it's a it's it's just the way it is.
The kind of dogs.
Yeah, it's a funny piece of property that goes between them three configurations.
Right.
And the twenty-nine's got the right way to the biggest area, the parking lot. Honestly, yeah, I know. But that's how it is.
So the garage is non-conforming because it will be too close to the future lot line? Is that what we were trying to also determine? I don't see the measurement.
Oh, it it'd be.
Well, in in the, if you see the remarks of the city planners' report. Number one, the remarks there.
Page.
Page thirty-seven.
Yeah.
Okay. I guess, yeah, well, thirty-eight.
And if you look at the aerial, that kind of gives you an idea of what's going on.
I I just didn't have the.
There's not a whole lot of room on all three of them.
But fortunately, the where that building is, there's nothing near it. But I still don't see how far that property line will be from that building. For some reason, I'm missing it. I mean, from the lot line, I mean.
I don't I don't know that we have the numbers on here.
No, there's no, I don't think there's.
But there's no buildings around, so that's a good thing.
There is none, right?
Yeah, there there's just a path, like eight feet.
Eight feet?
Eight or ten, no more than that. I would. Would you, Darla, would you say it's over that? You know, my arm width is six.
From the back line, it looks very adequate, but from.
No.
Yeah, I didn't see any.
I didn't either, and it it's not real wide there. It doesn't show that where I was telling you. But when I was telling you about the driveway, so when I looked at this, so I said, well, then this should be, you follow what I'm saying?
Right, because that's at an angle you were.
Yeah, because it sits over here, and there's a tree sits right here. So it's kind of a thing. So if they were going to do that, then I would just say get rid of that. You know what I'm saying? You'd almost have to, because you said they really don't want, and this is for them, their vehicles, and then this is that. But this sits, it did. When I was back, I went, man, this looks crooked.
Right, yeah.
This down.
But, you know, it's just the way it sits to the street.
So that's their property line right there.
This is the existing.
That's.
And there's a house right here.
Oh, yeah, and there.
Right.
And if you go here, there's a monster tree right there. I mean, that's a biggie.
So how far is this edge and that edge? This edge particularly, because there's a house there.
I I didn't measure.
This one, this side.
There's a fence here. I mean, these people got a fence.
Okay.
You you follow it? And so this is showing. All they're doing is they're they're squaring this.
Yeah.
Is what they're doing. So they get this.
Okay.
And then this gives them back, and then they got all this room back here.
Right.
For these guys.
That's a dirt, ain't that all dirt back?
Yeah, it's kind of a, yeah, like a, and then the dentist's office or in the old church deal, that there's a fence here, or, you know, whatever this part of this line comes to this building, but then that gives them all the space back here. But that that's what I see. It just needs to be.
Well, this is my concern right here, is this measurement and this measurement for the future. Might be okay right now.
Well, it's never going to change.
Unless the building, unless the garage is burned down.
Well, that here's the deal. If the building comes down, then then I think they'd they'd be a driveway. There's no way, how would you put another building in that?
Yeah.
It would never, it would never come to compliances of anything.
Right.
All all we're doing is trying to help them straighten their driveway. Being they happen, you know, most times, every one person doesn't own all that.
Right.
Well, that's the thing, too, right?
Right, you know what I mean? So then there, you know, there's no give and take or no, well, you're gonna have to do this. Well. So that's why I said they'd have to straighten it out here.
Yeah.
And that, and it took me a while at first, too. I read it, and then I sat up to by the school, then I went down there and walked around it. Then I realized that they owned all all of this.
Right, right.
So they were just trying to make it for their.
They're just trying to, yeah.
They're trying to give two, I I think what they're out to get two parking spots.
They're trying to help other people on first.
The the, well, this house here that's rented, and then and then this one's got room, but then they, this one is a long, narrow carport for two. So that that's what I I just figured that's what they're trying to do.
And you have to plan for the future for when they sell it, they want to have, you know, because they're not going to live forever either.
Right, that's true, Rose.
So.
That's true.
But I don't know how you you ever change any of that, and you know what I'm saying? I I really don't. Like, yeah.
And Rose, maybe they're trying to do this now, so if they do sell it, like you said, in a couple years.
Clean garage house.
Yeah.
Right, so.
So I gotta believe this will always have to be together, wouldn't it? Twenty-seven and twenty-nine?
Yes.
Yeah.
It has to be.
Right.
I mean, that's gonna be.
Straddling it, basically.
Well, yeah, it's one, it's one house that's split, right, with two apartments, correct? So this this partial's gonna have to stay together.
Yeah.
Okay, it's this one that would be, so that's what they're doing. I mean, you can one way or the other, you can. Right, but that's what I came up with.
Yep, yep.
Well, I'd like to know that the broads and compliance of those lot lines, at least.
Oh, it it fits in by the however you, whoever, it must have been surveyed, right? It hasn't made permanent stakes, but there's wood stakes out there in black. So somebody had to survey something.
Yeah, it's surveyed.
Yeah, this is a surveyor. This is a survey.
Right.
When was that done?
April twenty April twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-three is at the top.
Yeah.
Okay, so just.
So I mean, yeah, you, I mean, it's surveyed.
Mm-hmm. Where was the original lot line? Did that?
Right where that fence was.
I mean, for for this part, did it go like straight down?
Yeah.
Okay.
There's a driveway.
Carla, do we have that in here, that survey? Yes.
What page is that? Do you know what page that's?
Thirty-two.
Okay, thank you.
Accessory.
Okay, thank you.
All right, so one more check if anybody's online to make a comment.
Nobody at this time.
Okay, so then I'll make a motion that we close the public hearing on this one ninety-one South First and twenty-seven East Muskegon.
I support.
All in favor of closing the public hearing? Aye.
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 Opposed? No. Okay. To me, again, like I said before, we want to make sure that we're not setting a precedent. I the thing that stood out to me the most in the planners' report in his point number one, under his remarks, where he said this proposed lot line adjustment makes logical sense. And I think we've kind of really highlighted that in our discussions already, that, you know, it just going forward, this makes better sense for us, for the city, when maybe the Wolves don't own this property anymore, and they're somebody else. We'd we'd have to be dealing with this down the road again anyhow, so. So I will, using the paperwork we have here, again, I'll I'll just make this motion that we the motion to approve the dimensional variance request that Sue Wolf and Wolf Rental Properties made for one ninety-one South First Street slash twenty-seven East Muskegon Street in Cedar Springs to adjust the lot line, as has been described in our paperwork, and we have that survey to show that, and say stating that the variance does meet the standards set by chapter thirty-two dash one oh three, section. set by chapter thirty-two dash one oh three, section B, parts one through six for relief from chapter thirty-two dash five three zero. That would be my motion.
I second that motion.
Any further discussion on that?
Well, I do want to discuss the ordinance requires that accessory buildings be located at least three feet from the adjacent property line. Do we know? I don't know.
I don't know that we have that on there, but.
Well, the exact distance between the drip line of the existing accessory building and the proposed property line is not clear. It would be clearly it would be clearly within three feet. I'm not sure of that. This fact prevents the city from adjusting the lot line unless the variance is granted. So we're making a variance on the garage. Is that what we're?
Correct.
Our goal is.
Then the next step is for them to then petition for the assessor, right, for the lot line to be officially moved. But they can't do that until we do.
We give them a variant.
Right, a variance, right.
And the variance we're looking at is for the garage.
For one ninety-one, right?
That's what it is. Just give them that extra space.
Exactly.
Yes. Would I would like to have more measurement on the garage, but I, there's a house right here.
Which house?
Right here behind.
On First Street.
First Street?
Yeah.
Yeah, but that that's been, this garage has been there for a while. It's fenced away from it. The house, house property line is from that garage is like three or four feet.
Yeah, see, and and I would be glad to approve this. It's just in the future. What are we looking at? Another issue?
They won't be able to change that.
Lot line, no, but unfortunately, I was involved in a deal where somebody's garage was too close to.
I do remember it years ago, that was a woodshed, and they switched it to a garage. They tore the woodshed off. We allowed them to build a garage, which was of much better.
Well, you could kind of do on the survey report, the front lot line would now be eighty-two feet and that back line before it turns is sixty-six. So that would be fourteen feet then for the width of that area. Is the garage, I mean, that's a
little thing.
That's a small garage. I.
It's not very big, is it?
No, it's not very big.
Yeah.
It's the old fashioned
wooden, all wooden.
Yeah.
Right, so.
One door.
Yeah.
I would I would say if that's fourteen feet in that that size garage that you, it would meet that. You'd still have the three feet.
It looks like.
Could be adjacent property.
If you're you know, the water runs off.
Oh, no.
Yeah, runs off the roof and and somebody's backyard or whatever I, you know. I just, I hope, even though we don't actually have the numbers, that we are that the garage meets the variance.
I just have a quick comment, and Ms. Falcon can correct me if I'm incorrect, but the variance that you're issuing is because they can't meet that three feet.
Right, right.
Or issuing the variance because it's within three feet.
Of the.
Okay.
Does that make sense, Rose?
Yeah, yeah. Okay.
There's enough on this side, not on that side.
Okay. So I guess I could support that. How close is the house to that garage? Do we know? The house behind it, is that?
The one on First Street?
Yeah.
It's.
Right of ways.
Yeah.
Yeah, that that looks.
Yeah, it's not.
We're not worried about that other house. That's an important issue.
Oh, geez, okay.
Yeah, see, this is what she was talking about here. This is the only place, and you can almost see that tree that I was telling you about.
Yeah.
You have to straighten that up over here for this drive. But this this comes straight out right here. There's a pole sits right there.
Can you see that? So I might have to straighten that out and get that. But like you said, that garage, if it's any rain or anything, Rose, it looks like it's.
It's not going to be.
No, no, there's a fence right here.
Okay.
Okay, so there there's a barrier here, and that's going to be on their own property.
Unless they sell.
But it but it'll never, this, these properties are never going to change once this is done.
Right, that's.
There there's no more variance to them.
Right. These poor people on the corner don't have a lot of.
Which one now?
Yard, yeah.
This one? Oh, no, there's no.
There's a lot of.
There's a tree bigger than your yard. It's left in the sidewalk. I checked it out. That tree is bigger than.
Thank you, darling. That was very helpful.
Yeah, that was very helpful. All right, so any further discussion? We have a motion. We have support for it.
I support it.
All right, so all in favor of that motion that was presented, I?
I.
I.
Oppose, no? Motion carries. Thank you. All right, I don't believe we have any other business to conduct this evening. Just by way of communication, since it's been a while, in your packet is the kind of the training books for planning commission and ZBA, it's sort of shows who's responsible for what. And I think that that's good for it's now, you know, it's a public document. You could get this anyhow, but now it's you anybody who's checking this meeting out later, this is where you can go find it to see why we're what we're considering when we're making these rulings on these variances, and that'll help them out if they're looking for something relief somewhere. So with no other items before us, I'll make a motion that we adjourn the meeting.
I'll support that.
All in favor, I?
I.
Oppose, no? Thank you. Meeting is adjourned at six eleven PM. Thanks, everyone.
Thank you.